Okay, it's seven o'clock. I would like to call the November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting of the Planning Commission order. I would like to welcome Jason Skaggs, who's here from the Howard County Planning Commission. Jason, thanks for joining us this evening. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. We ask that you turn off your cell phones or any other devices so not to disrupt the meeting once we get started. Would like to point out this time, we're normally a nine-member voting board. There's six members here tonight. Anyone that brings a case of, you can ask for a continuance where there'll be nine members. That's totally up to you, but I want to make sure that you're aware that we are three members short. First thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes, and I will state before we get an approval, we will be approving minutes from the four thirty-four and four thirty meeting on October ten and the regular meeting on October twenty-third.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, minutes are approved. Director Sheilin.
First case tonight, Mr. President, is case ten Z seventeen, the petition of Caleb Hollingsworth of KDDLH LLC requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition to recommend to the Kokomo Common Council for a change in zone classification from C one, small to medium scale general commercial, to R five, high-density urban residential for property described as part of outlot number one sixty-six in the west half of Vacated Alley adjacent on the east side, also known as outlot number one eighty-five to the city of Kokomo Centertownship, Howard County, Indiana, as recorded in Recorder's Plat Book Two, page seven, containing zero point two-six acres, more or less, at two eighteen North Aperson Way. Mr. Johnson's here to represent the case.
Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'm Wyatt Johnson, five fifty-five Market Road, Tipton. This is a lot that's in kind of a transitional area between commercial and residential, so it makes sense for it to be rezoned to residential, and the particular zone that we've asked for accommodates the eight dwelling units that we hope to build in that area. So if you have any questions or comments, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Caleb.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? If I would like to make you aware of this, the first section, if you notice items two and three are close to being the same, the first one we're voting for is the property that the townhouses will be on.
Do we get a motion?
Get a motion.
We do.
Okay. Once again, any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote for case ten Z one seven.
Aye.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Director Sheilin.
The next case is case eleven Z seventeen, the petition of Caleb Hollingsworth of KDDLH LLC requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition to recommend to the Kokomo Common Council for a change of zone classification from C one, small to medium scale general commercial, to IS institutional uses at two eighteen North Aperson Way.
Move for approval.
Second.
Yeah, point of order. We do need, we forgot to read the staff report on the first case.
We didn't get the staff report in.
So we need to read that into the record. That's my fault. I apologize. Okay, the staff report for, this will be for the first case, ten Z seventeen. Caleb Hollingsworth, KDDLH LLC is requesting a change in zone classification for a property located at two eighteen North Aperson Way, the planned use as townhomes. This property is being split into two parcels. The portion being rezoned, in this case, is parcel one. The joint property uses and zoning at two eighteen North Aperson Way are to the west R five, high-density urban residential, to the east R five, high-density urban residential, and to the south IS institutional, and to the north R five, high-density urban residential. According to the city of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, this property is located in an area proposed for high-density residential. This use is described as single-family and multifamily housing of various types over six dwelling units per acre. Typical high-density housing would be townhomes, cluster housing, apartments, and condominiums. Under land use goals, to encourage orderly and responsible development, to promote the health, safety, and quality of life of residents in the city of Kokomo. Under relevant land use objectives, to remove barriers to infill development on vacant residential lots. Allow for a variety of low, mid, and high-intensity land uses to better ensure that there are diverse opportunities to live, work, and play. Aperson Way is defined in this area as a minor arterial. A minor arterial is defined in the Kokomo Comprehensive Plan as a street that collects and distributes traffic to and from collector and primary arterial streets. According to the local traffic council, there are seven thousand one hundred and seventy-six cars that travel this portion of Aperson Way per day. The proposed use of townhomes would not significantly increase traffic flow in this area. The requested zoning change is compatible with surrounding zonings. Therefore, the staff recommends the Plan Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Common Council. Thank you. I apologize for.
Terrible, I apologize for not calling from the staff report also. Now we've had the staff report. Do we have any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote for case ten Z one seven. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It will now go to the Kokomo Common Council, and we present it to them by Councilwoman Janie Young. Director Sheilin.
Okay, so I guess we'll read case eleven Z seventeen again. The petition of Caleb Hollingsworth, KDDLH LLC requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition to recommend to the Kokomo Common Council for a change in zone classification from C one, small to medium scale general commercial, to IS institutional uses for property at two eighteen North Aperson Way.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Wyatt Johnson, five fifty-five Market Road, Tipton, Indiana. The purpose to rezone this parcel is so that we can have parking to accommodate the vehicles for the residents. There will be one spot in front of each unit in addition to these. I think there's twelve or thirteen spots in the, in this parking lot.
Any questions from the board before we hear the staff report? Director Sheilin.
Staff report for case eleven Z seventeen, Caleb Hollingsworth, KDDLH LLC is requesting a change in zones classification for property located at two eighteen North Aperson Way. The planned use is a public parking lot. The joint property uses and zonings at two eighteen North Aperson Way are to the west R five, high-density urban residential, to the east R five, high-density urban residential, to the south, cluster housing, apartments, and condominiums. Under land use goals, encourage orderly and responsible development, to promote the health, safety, and quality of life of residents in the city of Kokomo. Relevant land use objectives are to remove barriers to infill development on vacant residential lots. Minimize, remove, or prevent the introduction of factors that are known to destabilize existing residential neighborhoods. Aperson Way is defined in this area as a minor arterial. A minor arterial is defined in the Kokomo Comprehensive Plans as a street that collects and distributes traffic to and from collector and primary arterial streets. According to the local traffic council, there are seven thousand one hundred and seventy-six cars that travel this portion of Aperson Way per day. The proposed use of townhomes would not significantly increase traffic flow in this area. The requested zoning change is compatible with surrounding zonings. Therefore, the staff recommends the Plan Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Common Council.
Any questions from the board? Now we've heard the staff report. Any questions from the audience?
My name is Doris Pullin. I own the house right behind there, and I'd like to know, did they build apartment back there? Will they put up a fence there dividing that property from my property?
Propose fence there, reply?
Not required. It's residential, right? So?
Yeah, it's residential against residential, so there's no plans for a fence.
Well, if you, if you pop back there, with no parking lot back there, how will, you know, they do?
Which way are you from?
I'm right behind there.
To the?
Right in the back of the house back there.
To the east?
Yeah.
About half to the right.
Yes, that's my house.
Okay.
There's no land back there.
The part, the parking lot will be in the southeast corner of the lot, so I think, I don't know, is your house?
Every one house back there.
There's, this is Mulberry, and this is Aperson. So your house is on Mulberry, right? How close to you are, how close to the street are you?
I'm right behind there.
But this, there'll be a house right here, parking lot's back here. Does your house go, does your lot go back to behind the parking lot?
What there, when you talk about, you gonna have the driveway to come in through, the alley?
There, there's a kind of an, an access or an alley.
Just a little bit out about the fire hydrant.
I'm sorry, fire hydrant?
Yeah, the fire hydrant, right there in front of my house.
Okay, and the alley's west of the fire hydrant?
Right in front of there.
Okay.
So when you turn in, it, driveway, that's what my, the fire hydrant is.
Okay, so the, there's a, we created an easement for that driveway because it's partly on this property, so that there wouldn't be a conflict, wouldn't be a need to move the driveway, but I don't know how far south.
The house sit in right there.
Your house sits right on?
It's right on, it's right on Mulberry. You have a garage or in the back?
That's a house back there.
Oh, it's a house.
Popped it back there.
Is that?
But it's on your property.
Yeah, that's my house, too.
Okay. There is going to be landscaping on the parking lot, but we didn't have a plan for a fence.
There's, the parking lot doesn't go right up to the property line. There's a, there's a pretty decent grass area between the parking lot and the property line.
And there'll be landscaping in that, in that green space?
Right.
So there will be some landscaping that will buffer?
Won't disturb my property.
No, no ma'am.
That's what I want to know.
Sure.
Maybe he could show, you can show her that.
I know what it is.
Any other questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of case eleven Z one seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. It will now go to the Common Council and presented by Councilwoman Janie Young. Director Sheilin.
The next case, Mr. President's, case eight P seventeen, the petition of Caleb Hollingsworth of KDDLH LLC requesting preliminary and final plat approval for the Grove on Mulberry to be located on outlot number one sixty-six in the west half of Vacated Alley adjacent on the east side, also known as outlot number one eighty-five to the center, city of Kokomo Centertownship, Howard County, Indiana, as recorded in the Recorder's Plat Book Two, page seven, city of Kokomo Centertownship, Howard County, Indiana, containing zero point four-two acres, more or less, nine lots at two eighteen North Aperson Way.
Move for approval.
Second.
Wyatt Johnson, five fifty-five Market Road, Tipton, Indiana. There's nine lots. One lot is the parking lot. The other eight lots are, eight lots are for the townhomes. Just a question, will this motion be to, for final and, or second? Preliminary and final approval, or do we need a motion later?
We'll need a motion after the primary is.
Okay, all right. So the, we got a couple of variances from the board zoning appeals last week, and with those variances, everything complies with the ordinance for lot size, lot coverage, and so forth.
This easement on the east side, that only goes down to the south end of the lot eight?
Yes. Just covers that gravel drive or what, that drive, that access drive.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Okay, this first vote will be for the preliminary plat approval only. All in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And petitioner does request final approval since everything, I believe, is in order.
I'll make a motion for final plat approval for this case.
Second.
Any questions on the, any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote for the final. Thank you. Plat approval, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Sheilin.
Next case, Mr. President's, case nine P seventeen, the petition of Lance McElroy for Arbor Homes requesting approval of the primary plat for Webster Estate subdivision to be located in part of the northwest quarter of section thirteen, township twenty-three North, range three east, Howard Township, Howard County, Indiana, Centertownship, containing fifty-one point nine-five acres, more or less, two-hundred-and-twenty lots at thirty-two-hundred Sandbalk Drive. Mr. Munoz is here to represent the case.
Make a motion for approval.
Evening. I have a second. Paul Munoz, thirty-four oh-five Tallyhoe Drive here in Kokomo. I'll be speaking on behalf of Arbor Homes, Lance McElroy. Our engineer wasn't able to meet it this evening. Again, we're just asking for preliminary plat approval on the Webster Crossing remaining sections, like fifty-one, almost fifty-two acres back there behind the existing first two sections that have already been developed. I put together a really quick slide presentation for the board on the project, a little bit about Arbor. Founded in nineteen ninety-four, we are a privately owned builder, still owned by the same person who started the company in ninety-four, built over eleven thousand homes over the last several years, and we were one of the few companies that was able to make it through the downturn, and we are a family-oriented business. Our homes, we pre-sell homes to allow for better selection, buyer selection. We do not build our own homes and then sell specs. Ranching two-story homes of all different varieties. We have about twelve, thirteen different models. Each one of those have about six to eight different elevations to those models. We are a member of Baggie and the IBA, and we do build to all codes and standards, plus we are an A+ rating with the Better Business Bureau. Project background, Webster Cross was approved in two thousand and four, and construction began shortly thereafter. Section one and two were partially completed until the downturn hit and were left quite a few lots vacant. Construction did pick up, back up in two thousand and fifteen, and the remaining lots in section one and two have been sold and built out. Original plat, like I said, was, has since expired. Arbor's requesting approval, just again, on the primary plat. We are no, not looking for any variances or changes to the current covenants or standards. The design is staying relatively the same. Only thing that may change is the sections that we choose to develop and the order that we choose to develop those in. Originally, they had them set up coming from the north to the south. We think we're going to do it slightly different by starting on the west side, building the pond, and on down Morrow Drive, because the pond is what will affect the development to the north. Not only do we need the dirt to balance the site, but also that entire area drains towards that pond and into that pond, so we have to have it built and developed to be able to discharge the storm water for the rest of the project. Total acreage, as we said, is fifty-two acres. Current zoning is the same. Again, we're not changing anything as far as lot sizes. We're not changing anything as far as the existing zoning, which is just pretty much approval of the primary plat based on what was originally presented back in two thousand and nine and ten. Just a couple of questions that were asked by some people in the last couple of days to, to us from the HOA and from some other members. Future sections, again, are going to be under the same covenants and restrictions. Nothing's going to change with those, so they will have to meet all of those same requirements. Lot sizes, minimum square footage, and all those requirements will still be the same as with the existing codes and standards and all of your subdivision control ordinance requirements. At the point of sale, all of the new homes will become a part of the existing HOA, so we're not looking to start any new HOAs or change that. And there was some concern regarding the speed bump outs, and the HOA said that they would like for those to stay in the project, and so we've agreed that that's no issue to us. We make sure where they stay. Do we have any questions or concerns?
Anyone from the board? Anyone from the audience have any questions on this case?
Dave Schaefer lives on one thousand four West Alto Road. That's going to, they're basically going to be building behind our house. The way it is right now, our land drains off into that field, and of course, with them all leveling that out, where's the drainage going?
The, I've reviewed, so they don't, they don't have their final plans for all the storm water, but they have a storm water plan that shows the locations of inlets and, and basically how everything's going to drain, and there's going to be a swale on, on the field property. It won't be on your property, but it'll be on the field property, and that swale will be lower than your property, and so you're, it'll still drain off the way, the way it does now, and it'll go into a, into a swale that drains into inlets, and those inlets drain to the pond, to the north, and then they'll.
How far, how close to our house are you guys going to build?
It won't be, it won't be on your property.
No, 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 no. No, no. I'm saying how close to my house, to my.
They'll be right up, they'll, they'll be land disturbance up to your property line.
Talking about structures?
Yeah.
Houses?
Yeah.
So you, probably the house from your rear property line would be about thirty or forty feet back, so they won't be right up at your property line, and that's probably going to be a little bit further, maybe closer to forty-plus because of the drainage easement in the back.
Also, is the city planning on putting access in there? Like, there's, I mean, there's access now because of the telephone poles and stuff, but I'm saying like an alley or anything like that?
There's no drive access. There won't be any drive access there in your back, in your backyard.
Well, right off my property.
Off, no, it'll just be, it'll just be a drainage swale that'll take water from both sides and, and direct it into, into the.
Okay, so it'll be an oversized ditch, basically.
Eh, it's not an oversized ditch.
Well, I mean, it'd be a good sized one.
It's, it will be a noticeable drainage area. It's not going to be, it's not, it's not going to be a ditch ditch. It won't look like it, it won't go over ground, it'll be available, but the, it'll be the, the property owner's responsibility to the north to, to maintain that area.
Okay, also, I was just wondering why you guys, why they had marked in front of the house on Alto Road.
Are you talking about locate, the utility locates?
Yeah.
Typically, when, when locates are called in, it's a general area, and the utility locators are going to locate off the property. Sometimes, just for instance, on this project, there's a storm sewer, for their storm water discharge out of the pond goes west to Park Avenue, and there's a storm sewer that was installed for the Alto and Park intersection further north that they're going to be tying into. So I'm sure they, they located further than, than was necessary in order to make sure that those off, the off-site improvements, they had all the locates for them, and sometimes, it's, it's free to locate, so sometimes people just get a little bit.
Okay, I just wondered because I thought, well, if they're going to tear all this, maybe they can finally fix my drive. Because they've got, when they build Alto, when they redid Alto Road, they've got it draining towards my house. That's what I was asking.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That won't be touched.
Any other questions from the audience? Please come forward, sir.
My name is Bill Giacomo. I live at thirty-eight sixteen South Park Road. I'm here representing my wife. Have any of you driven down Park Road like the, from, between Lincoln and Alto after a significant rain? Anybody?
I drive it every day.
I lived there.
Okay. She lived there.
Have you driven down it with, after a significant rain?
Probably, probably.
Have you looked on both sides? Because there's standing water in the yards on both sides.
This project isn't going to, going to affect.
Can you guarantee that in writing?
I, I, I can see from.
That's a fair question.
Sure, and, and the, and the answer is that guarantees can't be made when it comes to rainfall in general, but I, but I can tell you that there isn't going to be a land disturbance on or off of, off of the fifty-two acres. The only land disturbance off of that is the installation of a storm sewer that runs west into the, into the existing storm sewer. I don't know where you are related to, there's some open areas on the east side of Park, north of Alto, and then.
We're on, we're on the east side of Park.
Right. There's, there's a couple of, there's a couple of old, old, that were existing accesses into this property. I think they're fifty, the fifty-foot wide, those are going to be, those are going to be considered common areas for the, for the subdivision, so there's not going to be a road that comes out onto Park Avenue in those fifty-foot wide areas, but there is a, a location where there's going to be a storm sewer that comes out and goes into the existing storm sewer inlet that's probably.
Where will that be?
Where will the storm sewer be installed?
Yeah.
In, in, in that, I don't know if you can even see it on that drawing. It's, it's, it's that little thing in the northwest corner of the.
Because right now, by our house, there's a yellow line across, and it says something about a four-inch pipe.
That's a gas line.
A gas line?
Yep. Gas lines are, gas lines are always yellow, and they always have to mark the size and.
The reason I was asking, I forget that street north of us.
Mund Drive.
No, not that one. It's a.
Citrus Lake Drive?
The name of that street.
Gulf Shore Boulevard?
North and it goes west.
Zartman?
Zartman, yeah. Okay. They've already cut the street up there, and it messed up that blacktop.
I'm aware of that. Yeah.
Are they going to fix it?
They, they will be fixing it.
Because every time they cut the road, sooner or later, it sinks.
It, there was, there was not flowable fill installed where there probably should have been flowable fill installed, so, yeah.
And, but you can't guarantee that that won't make the standing water worse?
No, it's not going to make the standing water worse. There's, it just, the way that, the way the subdivision gets built is that all the water that's in that subdivision goes through the detention facility before it comes out, and all, the entire, everywhere around the perimeter of that fifty-two acres is going to be lower than it is now. So if there's water that was running off of that site, it'll go into the swale instead and then find its way into the, into the inlet. So, so I, my, my, I am anticipating that this subdivision will only make the adjoining property owner, or the adjoining properties more resilient to flooding. It's, it's, it's about impossible to, to say, okay, under, in, in this rain, it, it was a problem, but now it's not going to be, but it's, it, these, these subdivisions get designed in a way that makes sure that the adjoining property owners are not adversely affected when it comes to detention, or when it comes to drainage.
Okay, if they build houses back there and put city roads in, then who's going to have to maintain those roads?
The city of Kokomo. What will happen is the subdivision will get, once it gets platted, the, the improvements will be made, and then, once those improvements are done, the city inspects all the work that gets happened, that occurs on the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, the streets, the curb, sidewalk, the. sidewalk, the, the street signage, any pavement markings, all that. The city inspects all that during construction, and then, once they're completed, they'll, they'll, they'll ask the city to accept those, and we'll accept those, and there'll be city improvements.
Okay. The reason I'm asking all these questions, I was on the planning commission in Sapporo, Oklahoma.
Okay.
And I was on city council.
Okay, okay. Hopefully, it's the same way.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, one more. If, I'm sorry.
He didn't say he didn't have anymore.
Well, no, one more, and that's it. If, uh, we get significant rains, like I said...
Yep.
And what, what's going to happen?
What's the recourse?
Yeah, recourse.
If I'm wrong, give me a call. Give me a call, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
My name's Tim Turner. I live at 3222 Morrow Drive. Come before the commission as a resident of Webster Crossing subdivision and also a member of the homeowners association board, okay? We do have some concerns. We're not in opposition of Arbor Homes coming out. I've talked to Paul already. We're not in opposition of Arbor Homes coming out and developing that, because we've had other place, other people come in and try to develop. We have concerns with infrastructure, just like the gentleman said. Our concerns being in that association, because I've lived there for over 10 years now. We've got pond issues. We've tried to contact the city engineer's office about addressing those.
I can answer that question for, you're, are you talking about the outfall, the in-sections on the outfalls?
We're talking about the bales and, and the drain into the pond, the existing ponds now.
We're, we are, I just approved a contract to fix those today, so...
Okay, I mean, because I've contacted your office and...
Yep, yep, and we've, we've tried to get them, we've tried to get them repaired. It's, unfortunately, I don't have a backup in my office, so I've been working, trying to get those prioritized, and we've finally made the decision in order to get those done, we're going to, we're going to contract that out.
And, and, and I just want to double check now, based on your presentation and our conversations, and, and you can express that to the committee, all of the new homes that are being built will drain into the existing pond. Is that correct?
I did talk with our engineer a couple of minutes ago. He was explaining to me that there are some of the lots to the north in the, up here towards the top, there's several of those lots that are already designed and infrastructure is already in place for those to drain to the north to that other pond.
And therein lies our, our concern as an association is those pond, that pond was built probably roughly 15 years ago, and if you go out there and look at that pond, it cannot hold any more water. And if we're looking at another 30 to 60, maybe even 80 homes draining into that pond, this past summer, the water was up over the, where the level is, and just this past week, it was, it was all the way up to the edge. So, I mean, if you're looking at more homes draining into that pond, you're talking thousands of gallons of water, and there could be potential issues of flooding of the homes that are around those.
I don't...
And with the, you know, the issues, hopefully, we get those fixed with the bail. But, you know, we need some kind of infrastructure in place, because right now, as an association, we're bearing the costs of maintaining that pond, treating that pond, mowing that pond, and you have homes on Alto Road, on Park Road, who are not a part of our association and who do, do not contribute to us maintaining that pond, and now the city's going to drain all these people's water into that pond that we have to maintain as an association.
But the homeowners will be a part of that association? That's what, that's what you said, right?
Yes, yeah, all the homeowners in the...
The new homes, but I'm talking about the homes off of Alto and Park Road are not a part of the association, but yet we're required to maintain the pond, treat it, mow it, and any other issues that we have with it, because we've been trying to get it fixed for two years now, and the city still won't even get back with us. Now, granted, you said it's fixed.
I, I didn't say it's fixed.
I'll see.
I said it's getting fixed.
Okay.
What I would say is, when, when those ponds were built, my expectation is that when those ponds were built, the, the, they were, the property that is currently proposed to be draining into those ponds were considered as a part of that, that, the construction of that pond. If you're saying that rainfalls here recently have caused the pond elevation, the water elevations to get really high with, and, and not go down in a reasonable amount of time, that, that seems to me that there's, there may be something, there may be something structurally wrong with the outfall pipe that is causing some sort of restriction. It's not a design flaw, I don't believe, because typically, typically ponds are, are oversized for a typical rainfall. They're, they're designed, when, when subdivisions are built, residential subdivisions are built, they're designed to take more, actually more than the excess water that the, the developments will cause. We, we, our requirement is that they actually make things better. It's, they have to hold back the 100-year, 100-year storm to what it would be in a 10-year storm before they started. So typically, the water that gets discharged out of a, out, off of a site like this, the peak discharge will be lower for, for an average, for a, for a typical rainfall. So if, if you're saying that there's a problem with a pond, I'd like to know exactly which one, and, and then we'll do an investigation to ensure that the...
Well, there's only one pond, Webster Crossing subdivision.
Okay, that's, it's the one on the north side of the...
It's right off of Morrow Road.
Yep, yep.
On, on the actually south side, if you're going Morrow, north side, if you're going Zartman.
Sidewalk in the face of the street.
Okay. You know, again, you know, I've tried to bring these issues to your concern, you know, as far as contacting your office, so we can address some of this before tonight, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to get in touch with you.
Okay.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll take a look at that, but as far as the design, and I, I haven't finalized the review of, of the drainage calculations. We were provided detailed drainage calculations for the entire area, and, and I'll ensure that, that those ponds were included in the drainage calculation.
You know, because if there is a blockage, like you said, or something like that, you know, maybe it's an easy fix, but, you know, at this point, not being an expert and an engineer, I couldn't sit up here in front of the commission and, and, you know, say one way or the other.
I don't, I would say that, I don't believe that there's a design, that there is a design deficiency in that pond that would not allow the, the, the properties on the north end of that to tie into it.
Well, I can only speak from being the HOA representative and seeing the water and the levels firsthand, you know, I don't know if any of you have been able to look at it.
It is designed to hold wa, I mean, it is designed to, to, to change levels, and, and the, the pond elevation in, at, at no time can go lower than a certain level, for the most part. I mean, the, the elevation of the pipe going out, it can't really go any lower than that, so...
Which is fine, but based on what we've seen in the summer with the rainfall, and then when you're adding an additional 60 to 80 homes, potentially to that same pond, you know, based on the levels that I've observed, and then you add that additional rainfall, there is potential there, so...
Okay.
Okay, so moving forward, as far as additional concerns, is the traffic congestion? Yes, I'm sorry, mister.
I got a question, and it's right over your head.
Yes, sir.
Could you revisit, when you're talking about how many lots to the north, when you was talking about your engineer, how much is going to go to the existing pond?
How much is going to go to the existing pond? So like he said, there are a number of lots to this northern, be the northeast corner that are going to go in. So there's 220 lots total that are going to be developed. There's going to be 160, no, 160 of those that are going to drain into the new pond. So you're going to have about 40 to 60, give or take, that are going to drain back to
Sir, if I could approach, I can, I've got a map, I can show you the lots, but...
When they, when they designed the original...
Mm-hmm. Section two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And had that pond in there.
There, as far as I know...
That condition was part of that.
Those are draining to the north?
Beg pardon?
I believe the only reason those are draining to the north is because those are actually part of, there's already infrastructure in place for those to drain that direction. If you look out there in that field, there are some storm lines that are already, that have already been run.
So, so when the section two, when section one and two, they, they designed, they did preliminary design for the entire, for all the sections, and then started working their way south. So when the, when the pond was designed, the pond was designed with these, with, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, you, you're basically using the, the subdivision plans that were originally approved at one...
We have, we have the exact same engineering firm that designed the first ones are helping us through this process, and it's, it's almost the exact same thing as what they...
We looked at the, we looked at the subdivision...
The whole nine yards.
Uh, back in 2006 or '07, I'm going to assume, yeah.
Which, in that case, was over 10 years old. Now, you know, with sediment and things building up in those ponds, it doesn't allow as much water to go into the ponds?
Actually, actually, it doesn't, because all the water that's in the pond in dry, in dry weather, all that water, in essence, is, is useless from a storage standpoint. It could be water, it could be dirt, it doesn't do anything. It just, it just sits there. The, the only useful portion of that pond is from the low water elevation up, because that's the, that's the part that stores. So, so any siltation that goes into that pond, while eventually, eventually it can cause problems, but it doesn't cause a detention problem, because that, that area is not used for detention, because it didn't have dirt in it, it'd have water in it, and it still wouldn't be useful.
I would just ask, as a resident and also as an association, that we look at that and address that issue if we could. You know, I don't know if you guys are going to vote tonight on whether you approve these or don't approve them, but, you know, that's something that we do have concerns about, you know, as far as the residents around those, around that pond, as, you know, as far as possible flooding.
I would, I would say, I'm, I'm just, throw this out there, uh, so once these houses get built, they'll be a part of the association. So the, the cost of that, maintenance of that pond will be borne by more people than there are now, and the folks that come in, and my assumption is that everybody's going to pay the same rate, right? So if there's...
As far as I know, yes.
If there's, if there's maintenance required for the pond, those folks may have only lived there for five years instead of 15 years, and they're going to be paying for the maintenance of the pond at the same rate.
So what you're saying is, you would recommend that you pass that cost on to the residents in the association later on, instead of addressing the issue now?
No.
Saying that we're going to pay to have it fixed?
I'm saying the issue now, if there, if there's siltation, if there, if there's pond maintenance that's required, and it's, it's the responsibility of the existing homeowners association, so that...
To a degree, because, because you, you have tied in other homes off of Park Road that doesn't pan to the association.
City never tied any, we don't tie anybody else into that pond, not into that.
I believe you are. That's the issue.
There's nobody, there's, everybody around that pond is in Webster Crossing subdivision, except for the folks on the north end of that, north side of that pond, and they're draining to the pond to the west.
From my understanding, there's homes on Park Road that's not a part of this association that is tied into that pond, based on the city. You might want to check that.
Okay.
And homes on Alto and Park that's going to be built for the new pond, are going to drain into this pond, also the new pond.
Nope.
That's, nope.
Nope.
So where's the water going to go for them?
It's still, it's still, it, it goes wherever it's going now.
Okay. Yeah, but we were told by the city that water, that Park Road residents, some of those, that water does drain in, and the pipes do drain into our pond. If I'm wrong, I stand corrected.
They're drainer on the property now, that it's not, we're, they're not picking up anything that, anything new.
The other issues that we have is traffic congestion. You know, I know that entrance is very narrow, and with them building new homes on Mun Road, that basically is the only way in, besides going out the backside off a sandwalk, which leads you into an additional subdivision, which is Webster Park, which has more of a parking and traffic congestion than we do. So now, we're going to feed that traffic, an additional 220 homes, which you're talking probably over 400 vehicles, either down to Mun Road, which is already congested, we've had accidents there, we had a Western School bus hit a construction not even two months ago, trying to get through the intersection. You got parking on both sides, then you got equipment coming in, you know, is there going to be an access road for the heavy equipment, because you are putting new roads in? So there's going to be a lot of heavy equipment coming through right at that main area. So we're going to have a separate access road for the heavy equipment, or is it all coming down Mun Road also?
It'll come in off of the Mun Road entrance and into Construction Drive, whatever section they're currently, currently working on. Try to bring it in as short as distance they can from...
That road is starting to have some deterioration right now. Can you start bringing it in?
Excuse me, sir, excuse me.
Yeah.
I'd love to hear from you, sir, but I, if you're going to come, I need you to come to the mic and give your name, and you're...
Yeah, based on...
I'd love to hear what you're going to say, but I need you to come to the mic to do so, please.
Based on, on our experience, I've been out there, like I said, for over 10 years. We've been through probably three, maybe four, construction companies. We've had Citation Homes, Majestic, Westport Homes. They've brought equipment in without even having to tear up or put new roads in, and they have tore the roads up, and they have, they've been patched by the city. But every time they patch it, they bring more equipment in, and it just tears it up again at Mun and Morrow, and with the size of equipment that you're looking at bringing in, which would be actually heavy equipment to, to, to build a pond that's a mile around, and who knows how deep, you're talking some pretty heavy equipment. So if there's not an access road, is there going to be anything from Arbor Homes, a bond or something that's going to fix that infrastructure? Is that going to be tied on to the city? Is the city going to be liable to fix that, and the taxpayers, or what?
The, when that equipment comes in, the, the actual, actual road equipment that comes in, only comes in once, and then they work on that section, and then, and then they'll pull off. It's on a, it's on, it, it's on a lowboy, a, a rated truck, trailer, that is, that can, that can drive on, that drives, once they leave here, they're going to go everywhere else, and, and, and the asphalt will be as good as we can, good as we can get it. I, I, we can talk, we can talk about the condition of the pavement. It's the cities, the city maintains the streets, so it's our responsibility to, to make sure that those are taken care of.
And, and, you know, that's great, but in theory, yeah, that's what happens, but being out there 10 years and seeing three or four different construction companies come through, in reality, that doesn't happen. Just speaking from experience, okay?
Okay.
So, you know, at this point, we only have two roads. We've got Mun Drive, you're looking at a potential of 400, 500 vehicles coming through Mun Drive with 220 homes, once it's done, or feeding all that traffic back out the back, off Sandwalk into Webster Park, down to Elk, which in turn is a congested area anyways, at Elk and Webster, you have Posterific, you've got the postal service. You know, I'm just looking at traffic. I know we sit there for long periods of time at Webster and Elk every day. I can imagine what it's going to be like when you're talking about feeding another 400, potential 400 vehicles through that area. And there's no recommendation or nothing on the plot plan to add any additional roads, like, like the gentleman was saying, either Alpha Alto, or Webster, or Zartman. There's no plans at all to add any additional roads, correct?
So, as I said earlier, we are just looking at the exact same plan as what was designed originally. Most likely, and you could probably speak to this, Kerry, is that whenever those entrances were designed and the amount of traffic going through them, this entire project was figured into that, as far as traffic counts and what those roads go on. So we're, again, we're not looking to change anything or do anything different from what was originally projected.
Okay. And we ask as, you know, as an association, that you guys take a look at that and, and see if there's some kind of a potential, even ask Arbor Homes, you know, we're asking if you can look at that as some way of alleviating some of that traffic in that area.
I, I will take a look at that. I, I, I will.
Yeah. You know, and, and, you know, in closing, and, and there might be some other residents here, we just asked that, I know, I had talked to Paul earlier, and we, and he indicated that all 220 homes would go into the existing pond, but now that's changed. My, our recommendation is that, if you can, that all those homes feed into that new pond, just for water purposes, drainage purposes, because of that potential risk that we face.
I can take a look to see if, if that, I just didn't know what year.
Right.
If that's feasible, but in the meantime, we'll take a look at the outfall piping of the, of the pond itself to determine if there's, if there's, if there's a reason to determine if there's, if there's, if there's a reason that the elevations, uh, are not acting the way they're supposed to.
You know, because unfortunately, you know, when, you know, as an association, we took over Webster Crossing. Once Westport Homes pulled out, there was, you know, we have some of the ponds caving in in certain sections. Again, I don't know the logistics. I don't know how a pond is built. I don't know what the requirements are. But you know, with Webster Park, looking at their ponds and they're caving in and now ours is starting to cave in.
By caving in, you mean, you mean erosion?
Erosion on the sides, you know, those are concerns that we have. And if you add that additional water into there, I, I'm afraid and the association and residents are afraid that that erosion will speed up. So, uh, at this point, if anyone has any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer. If not, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Quirk. I live at nine thirty-six Zartman Road. Um, just, I was asking a quick question about, I actually live on, on the pond that's in question. I, I don't know anything about ponds. If it is working properly, should my yard flood at any, with any amount of rain? Because I feel like if I live on the pond, I should not have that issue. The, the yards between our houses with any amount of rain, it'll take.
It's, it's, it's between your house and your neighbor's house is, is where, is where water stands?
The, yeah, that, that's, that's, I mean, we have standing water almost all the time, but we can have an inch of rain. And between, it, on both sides. So I don't know, it, I don't know how far my neighbors are affected, but.
Yeah.
Um, we have standing water all the time. Like during the summer, we can't mow because it's.
So what can happen, um, it's really not a subdivision construction issue. It sounds like it was more of a home construction issue. When the lots are built, the lots, they, they grade all the lots to, to the elevation that we, their elevation shown on the plans of this is the elevation of this lot. And typically they're trying to drain the back, the back half of it to the back and the front half of it to the front. And there's side swales in between. And it sounds like either during the subdivision construction, but especially during the home construction, there can be a lot of disturbance. You're putting in footers and you're driving around. And it sounds like it just wasn't graded properly. Um, it, it doesn't sound, the pond's not backing up into your, in between those houses. It's really just water not getting away, not water that's coming back up.
Right.
So it's a, it's a, it can, it's a, it's a problem we see a lot in sub, in, in, in some subdivisions where the, when the houses were built, the grading wasn't done properly before it was, before it was turned over to the homeowner. And that's what it sounds like. I mean, we can take them out and take a look at it, but it, it, it's a, it's a grading issue. Either, either happened during construction or something has happened. If a fence gets installed and it, it doesn't take much. If the fence gets installed and there's dirt, it doesn't get hauled away or it doesn't get regraded afterwards, that can, that can cause it. Um, there are even, even a new, well, sometimes utility companies can do, can do things like that. Or if there's an invisible fence that goes in or irrigation system, some of that times that can cause it. But typically that's what it is. It's a, it's a, it's a home construction issue, not a subdivision construction issue.
Okay. Um, one of my next questions is what potentially, um, we've noticed some discrepancies possibly in the property taxes in our neighborhood. We'd actually just, personally, we just had a home appraisal done. Um, and in talking to a couple of people, um, it, I, I guess the, where I'm getting at is what will all of these homes do to our property taxes? Because just the few that have been already added, we've gone up. Just our particular home, and we're not even one of the brand new homes, um, just in the two years that we've lived there. I think we've gone up, I didn't look, look at this off the top, three thousand, it's, it's a significant amount. Our property taxes just in the hundred homes or whatever's built, been built in the last two years. I, these are, I don't know these numbers. But so what is that? I mean, are we looking at a tax increase?
So just to speak to that point, my house is in an older subdivision, uh, again, on Talio Drive, and mine's gone up substantially too. So I don't think it really had anything to do with the new homes going in your area. I think that's just, uh, probably something doing more of the general assessment.
Yeah, and I, I live in a neighborhood that's had several homes built and mine, I wouldn't say mine hasn't gone up significantly. I mean, it's gone up, but it hasn't been significant either. So I, I don't, appraising or assessing is, uh, is challenging to understand sometimes. It, I, I, I've seen, I've seen entire subdivisions that'll go up. Typically what happens is they assess, they assess the neighborhood. They, they make changes to entire neighborhood, up or down. You can look at one neighborhood and they'll be up eight percent. And the other one, a neighborhood next to it goes down four percent. Um, and it's, it's all in the houses that get sold and it's really.
Well, that's why we're.
I would talk to, to the county assessor.
Yeah, because that's where we're getting hit, is our assessments going up, but our property value's not going up fast enough. So we're actually paying taxes on thirty thousand dollars more than our homes are praised at.
Yeah.
So is this gonna make that work or?
I can't answer that question.
Okay.
I, I lived on Sandwalk Drive.
Well, your house was one of the ones that we, that we used.
And sold for higher.
Yeah, yeah.
Great when you're selling your house, but hard for the rest of the neighbors that are there. So I know two neighbors down just sold theirs as well. And they got the same. It was appraised very high.
Right. Which is what we thought we would do because we saw that a lot of them were going up. But our, like, our assessment was just going faster than our property value. And in talking to a few people, they said it's because the new homes are going in, which is gonna raise our property value, but it's also gonna raise our taxes. So it seems like our taxes are going up faster than our property value.
I would ask the county assessor.
Okay.
County assessor can answer that better than we can.
Okay. Um, and then to add on to a couple of Tim's questions, um, because we live on Zartman, one of the, we've heard back and forth. I'm, are there any plans on opening Zartman?
There is no, there's not. From the city's standpoint, we, um, there is no, uh, plans to extend it to Park Avenue. Um, and until any development were occurred to the east, there wouldn't be an extension to the east either.
Okay. And then as far as the construction traffic goes, um, I know I had several, several issues and I talked back and forth with Kevin Summers that they're actually parking, I, I don't care so much about the roads as I do. When you park a construction vehicle on this side and this side.
I saw the picture that Kevin texted me about that issue and.
You can't get a, you can't get a truck through there.
There was a, there were, I, if I remember right, there were two houses being built, one on each corner, probably at the same time. And that's, the construction at the corner, I felt like was the, was the most significant cause of the congestion related to construction at that point. Um, if there, we can look at the parking right there at the intersection to determine if, if parking at the intersection is causing some kind of congestion that would reduces the capacity of the intersection.
Well, yeah, and that's my concern is if you're starting at that point, instead of starting at the western side of the neighborhood, of the land, if you're starting at that point, when you start, they have nowhere to go. So we're gonna run into that issue again where you're gonna have.
The, the, it looked to me like the problem was right there at the corner. There was a house on one corner and a house on the other.
Well, they built that whole street all at the same time.
Yeah.
So that's the thing, if you're gonna extend Mun all at the same time, or you're gonna extend Mauro to the south all at the same time.
Yeah.
You're gonna, again, you're gonna have all that traffic parking on both sides of the street.
We can, I, under, go ahead. Yeah.
So, um, on the land development side of it, all of the trucks, all the heavy equipment will be on site from start to finish all the way through the section. So anybody coming in, they will be able to park on the construction driver off of the road, uh, into the dirt area and that side of it. So on the construction side of it, you have, uh, on the land development side, I'm gonna be the one that's in charge of this project. On the construction side, we have two, uh, construction coordinators. One of them's on the front half and one of them's on the back half. Both of those guys live in Kokomo and will be working on this site. So this site will be visited all the way through the project almost on a daily basis. So we will be doing a pretty good job of trying to make sure that these guys stay out of the, excuse me, stay out of the road, are parking in the driveway if at all possible and try to make sure we can control that congestion as much as possible. So it's not like, um, we're just gonna have contractors going to and from and nobody's gonna be there to, to oversee them. We will probably have somebody there almost on a daily basis.
Okay. And then my last question is, we were just kind of talking, if we're getting all of these new families, we have no land to build any kind of amenity. We have no playground. We have no, and like I was telling him, I, I lived in a, in a Westport community in Noblesville. We paid the same exact HOA fees and we had a swimming pool and we had a walking track around our pond and we had, so why are we paying so, and it's not, I mean, it's not a ton of money. But if we're gonna be having all of this new revenue, like we were talking about, can we have amenities? Well, our HOA can't build amenities because we don't have any extra land.
That, that's something that you guys can work out.
Something we can visit. Um, have to take a look at the total plan and see where we might be able to, uh, to try to fit something in, whether it's a pocket park or something of that nature.
Okay.
But I'll definitely bring that up to our, our engineers, see what we can work out.
Okay. Did you have something you were gonna?
No.
Does that value to the homes? So we're, we're off of that.
Okay. And then my la, sorry, my last question is, will there be any kind of boundary between our neighborhood and the apartment complex? I know that's becoming a high crime area. Um, so I feel like if you're gonna butt up to an apartment complex of high crime.
We'll probably, uh, by the time we get towards that section, we're probably about three to four years out. Because we'll look at coming south around the pond to build the pond and then either stand up a little bit on the far side or start coming from, um, gosh, Zartman, I think that's where, start coming south in that direction.
But will there be any kind of fence or barrier or anything between?
We will probably wanna visit that and as a, as a builder, look at, at trying to come up with something along that side there. The only problem with that is, is that once we put the fence in, the fence in becomes a responsibility of the HOA and future maintenance would be on the HOA to do it. So we'd wanna make sure that we discuss that with you guys ahead of time so you understand. We, we could potentially construct it, but once it is constructed, it would be your responsibility once, once it's finished.
Okay.
Not another question.
Any other questions?
Hi, my name's Grace George and my husband and I live at three nine zero six South Park Road. Um, I just had a couple of questions. Um, the drainage system, is that gonna go in that easement that's to the south of our house?
It'll all be buried. It's all gonna be structural underneath. There will be an open swell or anything between the homes.
Okay, how long will that take? Do you know?
To install?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, probably have that section in about a week maybe, I think.
From, well, I, I don't know how far south you gotta go, but I'm, I'd, I'd say less than two.
Yeah, through the easement it shouldn't be.
It's, it's not an easement, it's common area, right? It's technically owned by, it's owned by, it's owned by the, the builder.
Okay. Um, my next question is, I know that the field comes right up to our property line. Is, is it gonna be met by a backyard to like a new house or?
Sure. So you, you'll come up to your property line and it'll slope off down into the drainage swell. And their property will slope down into that drainage swell also, which will be on our side, but it will be a backyard of another property.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Okay.
Kind of spoke with them already. Patrick Burns, eleven twenty, West Alto. Um, maybe I've missed this. When do you plan on starting and the location of your start?
So we're starting from Mun Drive, heading south on Mauro, uh, around that general direction. I think it, it extends.
Southwest in the field, is that right?
Yeah.
Because I'm not familiar with the homeowners, uh, area. So you're gonna have the land surveyed and my, we had, I bought the house. I've never have it, had the land surveyed. So there's, what can we do if you're saying our fence is on your land? There's nothing, I've got a shed that's right along my fence.
We can talk about it. I mean, it, it, we're not, uh, immediately come in and destroy.
I'm, I'm Alto and Park, I'm three houses.
But, but your fence and your shed are both on this side of the power poles. There's power line back there, right?
Yes, but I am, actually my fence is right on that power pole. I butt it up to my neighbor's fence and that pole, I wanna say it's right inside.
We, you can probably show them your construction plans and show them where, where things are gonna be. I, I didn't, when I reviewed the construction plans, I didn't see any encroachments that would cause them a problem. Just, just let you know.
Okay. And, uh, easement, now let's say I start having water issues where somehow the, the, um, where they elevate the ground starts running off in my backyard. What do I do?
It, it should, I, we can show you.
It shouldn't.
Well, I, yeah.
What, what, what's the process do I have if it does?
I would say, I would say this. So when, once their project is done, they have to supply us with a three-year maintenance bond. Um, and it's for twenty-five percent of the, the cost of the installation of the storm sewers. So if there's a problem in those first three years, then we have, we have a bond, basically it's a guarantee of, of funding to fix a problem.
As in like it's running off of my yard?
Yeah, as in, as in it's running off in the yard. And then we, then we, and during construction, I, I can also withhold building permits. I can, I can do other things.
And the timeframe is how many years, few years to do all this or?
So, yeah. Our estimate is we're probably looking at anywhere from four to six years.
Okay. And that's just for me to know. I mean, and there, there won't be any fence line or anything off that easement? Their backyard is open to ours. Right. Okay.
They, uh, you, there's no prohibition for fences in the subdivision in the homeowners association, correct? So there could be a fence back there. We, we don't allow, we don't, we don't allow fences in an easement. And there's an easement back there. So that drainage area, they can't build a fence across the easement.
Right, but you could run along it.
Yeah, but they won't, because they can't build one across, it won't be on your property, it'll be on the north side.
And that's why, man, just for privacy, more issues, like I got three little kids.
They could, I mean, they, they don't have to build a fence, but, but they could build a fence, but it won't cause a drainage problem.
And you've got my card if you wanna meet outside. I'd be more than happy to meet you. We could talk through.
I think I got all the answers I need, Bob. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
My name's James Roby and I live on, on Mauro Drive. You're saying that you, you're not going to build south or north on Mauro. You're going south towards Alto Road, off of Mun. Okay, are you going to allow the farmer to put crops in there this next year then?
I think any of the areas that we're not currently developing, we will probably still allow them to do a cash crop. If I'm not mistaken, we've done it in a lot of areas.
Well, the reason I'm wondering, the erosion will be horrendous if you don't do something.
No, we will, any area that we're currently disturbing, we have to have a stormwater, uh, control plan for. And that, whatever section we're working on will have a perimeter fence all the way around that, along with other measures.
Silt fence. It's this tall, but it's not a full size. It's a silt fence.
Okay.
We will, we will control that and then all the rest of the area will either have grass or some kind of vegetation on it to make sure that it does not ruin. So it, we will make sure there's no adverse effects of erosion on any of the other properties surrounding that.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Hector Aguilar. I'm probably one of the newer residents, um, on thirty-two fourteen Mauro. So I know you've kind of expressed a couple of times where they're building the retention pond at your, that's so, that's south of Mauro and, and, um, and Mun. But then.
South pond on the east side of Mauro.
Okay. Now, and I know people have asked this question a couple of times. I just wanna make sure I have a clear understanding. Your, how, the homes will be starting, or they'll build the retention pond and then start building homes around that going north?
Going south.
Going south.
Yeah, so if you're looking at, uh, let's see if I can find it in here. So right now, I'm trying to think of a point around. These two lots are, this is, so this is Mun, you're coming on Mauro. We're gonna start here and head south around the pond.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll probably end up putting a, a model right here on the corner. That's why we chose this direction first because we wanted a model as close to the entrance as possible. And so it'll head south and wrap around. And I believe we're gonna come maybe to about this intersection, in the first section. So it'll be these lots going up and the pond.
So it's just north of Alto, right? Or north of, uh, yeah, Alto Road. Okay.
Alto's down here and Marv is here.
Okay. So then it'll wrap around and then work its way back up?
That's right.
Okay. And you're saying it's anywhere between two to five years to make it north, closer towards Zartman?
Sure. So this will be the first section will be done in eighteen and then we'll probably look at either finishing out this, uh, going to the east or we will go all the way up to the top and start heading south. So, um, so it'll build out probably somewhere in the bigger of five six.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And you said you guys, your business model is you build upon purchase, correct?
Upon purchase, yeah.
Upon purchase, okay. Cause that's one thing I.
We, uh, we do not sell our lots to any other builders. We build on all of our own property that we develop. And, uh, in the twenty-three years that Curtis has had, the building we have, I don't know, would never left a division, subdivision that we have started. So in a case like this, we have finished every one that we have, we moved it.
Okay. Like I said, I'm newer to the, to the area, so I'm just trying to get understanding, coming from Hamilton County and seeing the construction and, you know, on, as I was mentioning earlier, the congestion on Mun and those homes being built and still being shown and not sold yet. And all of a sudden you see development of two hundred potential model or home, not model, but homes. And you're like, oh, okay, how's that going to, going to happen if there's still homes currently that are not being sold? So that was, uh, one thing. And then I would still, I understand that in theory or as it was constructed in terms of traffic flows and patterns, that it was first created to accommodate all this. But I don't know what can be done just to maybe quote unquote reevaluate it. Cause I know, kinda just echoing the sentiment from people who've lived there and lived there way longer than I have. You know, a couple of cars on the street and you're, you know, you're playing, you're ducking and weaving with cars that are going opposite direction. So when you're thinking of two hundred and some more potential homes in the next six years, I have a hard time believing that traffic patterns and flows are, are, are not gonna be. to be point of contention or maybe even danger, especially with more kids and more families coming in, so.
I'll take a look at it. I, I, yeah, Tim mentioned I'll take a look at it, so that's something to evaluate.
Anyone else in the audience? Any board members have any questions or comments?
I have a question. In '09, when this was first presented to us, was there as many businesses then on South Webster as there is now? Because it's horrendous getting out on Webster Street from that addition. I know Posterific, I know the building across the street that they own is new, so that's definitely made it more congested, but, but have we done a survey on how many businesses has been brought in on Webster to create maybe a bigger problem since it's been so long since you've brought this back?
I wouldn't say. Short of Bel Air, there's not been any. Short of Bel Air, I, Primrose, Primrose was, but I can't, they don't have a lot of, they don't have a lot, they're further east.
But Bel Air's the only thing we've done recently.
Yeah, that's out, that's out there.
At least in that area.
The one that you mentioned, Bel Air.
Any other questions from the board?
I just, you'd like to address, I know in the past, that Webster, Webster Street used to be four lanes, I believe.
It's three.
Three, and we reduced it down to two lanes, which, again, the traffic can't flow as quickly because we're down to two lanes now is where we had three, so that might, that might have created some of that congestion.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of case 9P17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Director Sheen.
Next case is item number six, the approval of Plan Commission Order 2017-1 for the YMCA development area. I don't know who's going to present that case. Basically, it's a TIF for the old Y for the new apartments, correct?
Yes.
So, that's why it comes before us, and it will be forwarded to the city council for review.
I didn't even draft it, I can do the creation of a TIF district for that particular project.
Right.
It's the first step, it's the creation of a TIF district for this particular project, it's a project-specific TIF, so it's only that area that as it generates money itself that's picked back in.
Yeah.
I'm happy to answer questions if any board members have any. Do you guys have any questions on it? Does it make sense? Did you have any questions, Jamie? Any questions?
Anyone in the audience have any questions on the?
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, we'll need a motion for it.
I'll make a motion, we approve Plan Commission Order 2017-1.
Second.
No questions from the audience, no questions from the board? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It now goes to, this goes to the city council?
Yes, it does.
This goes to common council, being presented by Councilwoman Janie Young.
I have no other business than that, Mr. President of Claims.
County meeting.
Don't forget the claim.
County meeting.
County meeting.
Anyone want to volunteer to go to the county meeting on the 21st?
We have one case.
One case.
All done.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of claims.
I move to approve the claims at the amount of $32,290.60.
Second.
We have a motion to second approval of claims, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, claims are approved. All right, motion to adjourn. Blue to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
One true.
Done.
Thank you.
Back to you.